Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to welcome everyone to the Abandonment Center. This will be the third town hall meeting I've conducted as your mayor. If you might notice that our Abandonment Center looks quite a bit different than it did at our first town hall meeting. We've done a lot of things. I formed an aesthetics committee, and that committee has worked very hard to make a difference in Buffalo. As you can tell, the interior has been repainted. Some of the old weather damage paint has been removed. Actually, all of the old weather damage paint has been removed. We've got our doors painted, and if you notice, we've removed about, I'd say about eight ceiling fans consisting of about nine ladies. It's my first job in the evening. The outside of the old wooden fence has been removed, and we have landscaping now. The picnic tables have been painted. A lot of stuff has been done. Your tax dollars have been invested in this building, but beyond that, a lot of private donations have been accepted and have been contributed to this building as well. And beyond that, a lot of old buildings have been removed. And I'm very thankful to those who volunteered to paint. I volunteered because myself, I was not, by any stretch of imagination, the most productive person here, but I did get to see a lot of people working very hard. This last April, the voters of Buffalo approved a sales tax increase for capital improvements. I have a lot of ideas, and this is my saying, I say a lot. I have a lot of ideas, and quite frankly, most of them sting. Every now and then, I will pull up my good ideas, and I will brush them off and promote them. So I may have several of what I consider my better ideas to propose to you about how we can move forward with this capital improvement tax. I'm also wanting to solicit your input. This is our town and our tax base, and certainly, we can garner good ideas from our community. I don't want to promote my ideas only. I want us to move forward united as a community. Our sales tax, new tax, will go into effect October 1st, and we'll start realizing money from that come December. Right around the first of the year, I expect, we'll have a budget meeting with our board of aldermen to determine what we can do with those funds, what we should do with those funds, and how we might move forward with future projects. We have some materials on the back table. I'm sure everyone's been there and seen what we have. We do have what's called a preference ballot, and it lists five projects that I'm going to discuss tonight. It's also got a blank space for your ideas, or if you hear someone else's idea, fill in that idea. And you can mark that ballot what your preference might be from, say, one to six. One being what you think is most important, six being the least important. And we'll use that data to kind of get a feel of what our citizens want, what direction we want to see as well. Now, last Thursday, we had a very nice town hall meeting with students from Missouri Architecture School. And they're doing very good work for us, and we're very appreciative of that. And their work will certainly be easily acknowledged. This is another attempt to present projects I thought of and hear of your projects and get your input. While we're here, though, I do want to address an issue that's been publicly addressed in our newspaper and people telling me privately about, and that's jobs. A lot of people say, Andrew, where's our jobs? At our first town hall meeting, people spoke out and said, Andrew, we want to clean up our community, and we want jobs. I certainly understand that need, and honestly, if I had a switch in my office and I could switch, and then there were jobs, that would be wonderful, but that switch does not exist. The question is, where are our jobs? What have you done as mayor to bring jobs here? Early in my term, I formed an economic development committee. That committee worked very hard to gather data. I've worked hard to see the jobs that we already have here don't leave here. There was a company looking to move to either Fallujah or Lebanon, and I worked diligently to ensure that they stayed here. I've talked to people more recently about the possibility of a chicken farm every year. I've been in touch with the lady who is the state representative from Wyoming who wanted to put horse slaughter in somewhere in southwest Missouri. So I've had my finger in the holes of potential income. But the reality is, companies aren't growing. They're not expanding as a company. And it's unfortunate. We're victims of that. There are a few sectors of industry that are expanding, however, very few. And when they do expand, they expand in a couple of ways. Smaller businesses can look towards communities where they know someone. It's a function of, it's not what you know, who you know. For example, someone might want to move a stall plant somewhere, and their cousin lives in that town, and they know someone who owns a building that can help them get started. Sometimes that's how smaller companies move and grow. Larger companies will conduct a feasibility study, and these larger companies will look at places that are geographically advantageous. They look for railways. They look for highway systems. They look for rivers and oceans. And this feasibility study will tell them if they need to grow, whether it's economically feasible, and where they need to grow. And sometimes, they'll find a region, such as southwest Missouri, and they'll look at the surrounding communities. Hypothetically, they might look at our region. They might look at Lebanon. They might look at Fallujah. They might look at Buffalo. And stop and think, when they look at these three cities, which city are they likely to pick? Which city is going to come in last place? See, Lebanon has a nice, large population. They have a bustling economy. They're right there on I-34. Fallujah has a hospital. They've got a college. They've got a $5 million pool. We can't build a $5 million pool. But there are things we can do to compete. It's kind of like going to a job interview. You want to look nice on your job interview. And folks, we don't, we don't have the right shirt on for that job interview, but we're getting there. Back to jobs. Mr. Vaughn pointed out in a letter to the editor that it's not government's responsibility to hand everyone a job. They do that in Congress, China. We don't hand out jobs here, but we can do things to promote economic growth. And here are some of the things that I would propose, things we can do to put on our nice shirt and go to that job interview. Locust Street Project. Now, backtrack a little bit. We're doing really good. I am very excited. The Locust Street Project is on budget, and it's on time. We budgeted for six months with the dream it would be done in three months and the hope it would be done in four months. And it looks like somewhere between four and five months. I feel fairly certain it will be done in four, six months. But all indicated, our work on budget, which is wonderful, that proves that we can do things ourselves, we can do for ourselves. And additionally, with this Locust Street Project, we've created eight jobs. Dallas County people. Government jobs are jobs, and people say, what have you done to create jobs? Well, we've created eight here. And if anything, that's eight more jobs than we accounted for. Twelve years ago, the city voters approved a transportation tax. And that transportation tax was to replace our personal property tax. And at the time, Mayor Hightower was very local about the need to maintain our streets. Curbing and guttering was a priority twelve years ago, and it should be a priority now. Curbing and guttering our streets not only eliminates our unsightly ditches, it creates a roadway that lasts longer and requires less maintenance. It's my dream that we don't simply pave over what we have, but we have nice streets that are easy, cost-effective to maintain and are attractive. Curbing and guttering allows water to drain from our streets, and it allows it to drain from our yards down a defined path. It puts that ditch more or less underground, it eliminates that outside of the ditch, gives us an opportunity to build a sidewalk there. With our ditch system, it causes our roads to wash. And this picture I have here is a perfect example of it. Water flows alongside the road, and the streets start to crack and to tear great. How do we fix them? Well, we throw another layer of asphalt over it. Here's, on Hickory Street, just south of the intersection of Hickory and Mill, our creek runs right along there. We solved the problem of the wash by throwing concrete there. It's not a very attractive solution, but it works. Again, certainly paved with a layer of asphalt over our existing roads causes our roads to be higher. If you notice in this photograph, that road sits up nice and high, higher than the yards. Adding more asphalt to it is going to help the situation. When you put another layer of asphalt, you can't put it as wide as the previous layer, so you end up with a triangle effect, and that narrows the road. Modernizing our roads was a priority twelve years ago, and I believe it would be a priority today. And that brings me to my ideas. For our first project, proposed project, I would propose what I refer to as Phase Two on the Locust Street Project, where we take up where we're currently leaving off, where we will be wanting to finish Phase One. I would propose this project would cover from 32 Highway on Locust Street, the more to the high school. It would cover Main Street, from there to high school, to the creek heading west, and walk on Main Street to the east. This project, and you can see the picture, we've got our Buffalo High School sign, and we've got our ditch out there. And this image was ingrained in my head when I watched the news one night. They came up from Springfield to do a story on our proposed capital improvement tax, and I watched that story, and they had a still shot of this road, and I didn't like what I saw. Here's our high school, our sign, something that should be a symbol of our community, something we should take pride in. And we've got this little ditch out there, and it looks worn down. And it's important that we have attractive schools, attractive communities. It's important for economic growth. The finer aspects of this project is it's going to keep those eight jobs here in Buffalo. It's going to give us a chance to do another project in-house that's going to be cost-effective. And the other good part of this project is the school has hinted that they might be able to take for half of it, or half of anything that touches their property. So it's a win-win situation. The second project, well, that's really weird. We had a proposed Green Space Trail. This project, the idea was brought to me by our own team culprits. I cannot claim this idea as my own. The folks I know are good when I see it. We have an existing creek as a passageway that runs through the middle of town. Our town kind of from the east to the west, it kind of slants toward the middle of that creek, starting in the southern part of our town. And we have a lot of drains that goes in that creek. And enhancing that creek would certainly facilitate drainage from the southern part of the city. The trail would provide recreation opportunities, and property values along that trail would certainly increase, and that would rather provide us an opportunity to further our streets. You saw the picture at Mill and Hickory. That intersection flood is quite optimal. We get to have drains. We could possibly do this through grants that are going to address a number of things. It would address our streets, it would address the flooding, it would address the conservation aspects of mother nature in that creek. They would address the sidewalks and walkways. There are a lot of opportunities out there with grants. Also, our transportation tax can be used on that, as well as our capital improvement tax. And city employees can work, do it in-house as well, which preserves jobs, jobs right here in Buffalo. The third project is what I call neighborhood enhancement project. We've seen the curving and guttering going in on one street in town, that's Locust Street, and that's quite a long stretch of road, and that's quite a big project. The one neighborhood in particular I've looked at is the Hayes, Chouse, and Mill Street Dishes. And that's the neighborhood that lies to the southeast of Runyon Park. Adding curving and guttering sidewalks would certainly enhance that neighborhood, increase property values, and I think that would be a very good neighborhood to enhance. I don't want to offend each one, but I would characterize that as neighborhood called Neighborhood. Some of the old rundown homes have been torn down and removed, and I think that would be a great place to work for your building. And I believe that would be the type of neighborhood when a company looks to relooking Buffalo, they're going to think, where are our employees going to live? Here's a nice little neighborhood. It's right next to this Green Space Trail. It's right next to the new park, and I think this would be a wonderful neighborhood to tour around. The problem with this project is it might be quite expensive. But like I said, you could be able to do it in-house, hopefully, and hopefully, we can do it in a cost-effective manner. The fourth project is a new animal shelter. We have proven with our new building, soccer fields. I got a picture of that. We have a nickname for it. I cannot say that public. It calls Mr. Rishel. Wayne insisted that we have a nice bathroom there for soccer, before we had a board body. And it became a big concern to Wayne when his grandchildren started playing soccer. And I think everyone agrees that would be something nice for the kids as well. So we have a men's room, a ladies' room, which has a men's room that's here on two stalls, a ladies' room has three stalls, a sink. We have a fully functional snack bar and storage. So a very nice little building. We were able to instruct the city employees. We did it in-house, and we did it very cost-effective. And I believe that's something we can employ as a tax to build a new animal shelter. If you look at the mobile home on the right, on the left, that's our office for our town, and that was donated. On the other side, that's our, some of our dogs. We have a series of small buildings where we house dogs. The picture on the bottom, that's not Buffalo. That's something I found on the internet that shows something that's nice, neat, tidy, needs to maintain, and that would be the purpose for what many purposes in town. Something that's easy to clean and maintain, and something that is cost-effective to maintain. How would we build that? Well, with our capital improvement tax. And it can be built by city employees. We certainly got the resources to do it, and I believe that's something worth doing. I understand that the town is something that's very polarizing. There's what I call the 12 cents solution. 12 cents, you can buy a bullet, and you put these animals down. If you wind up just right, you can get a bunch of them. I heard of the gunny sack. I can tell you, the Department of Agriculture will come down on us like a storm of bees if we start doing things like that. I believe treating animals humanely, and aside from that, it costs a lot to euthanize animals. There are veterinary fees, there's disposal fees, and I believe it's something worth investing in animal rights to work for the town. That being said, we have a wonderful program in town. Our town is a shining example of a successful government program. I say government program that works hand-in-hand with HFLCS. HFLCS, they take a whole lot of resources from our town. Free food, they adopt our animals out for us. We have a wonderful relationship. And I can tell you, Roger Jasper, where you get double his resources through outside entities, then we have sidewalks everywhere. So our town is a very successful program, and certainly, one worth investing in. The fifth project I would present to you is our square. I have a tale of two cities. The picture on top is a picture of the more peaceful square. Picture below it is a picture of the square that was preserved. And if you notice the difference between the top picture and the bottom picture, the bottom picture, there are vehicles there. People are spending money doing things. And I think we can do that here. About 20 years ago, at least something as my political science degree, I'm thankful I get to use my political science degree from time to time. Take time to call my professors. They might be impressed by that. About 20 years ago, there was a phenomenon called central business districts, and it might even extend to towns a hundred years ago. Businesses were starting to move towards the highway, box stores, and then downtown buildings were abandoned and left empty. But then the movement back to downtown started happening. Coffee shops started popping up. People started living in the upper portions of those buildings, and a thriving downtown community emerged. And we can do that here. No, we're not going to be like the bigger cities with all the college kids and the ski quarters and all the, you have any people with their $9 cups of coffee. I don't see that happening here, but there are ways that we can improve our downtown, ways we can do with businesses there. Now, a lot of people are wondering what kind of businesses we could put in downtown. And there's a number of examples. I prefer them as niche businesses. For example, if anyone here knits? Is anyone knit? We have one knitter. All right. If you go to Walmart, you might find three different kinds of yarn. They've got the yellow yarn, the red yarn, but they may not have a whole lot of variety. A knitting store, knitting supply store would be a wonderful patent business for its square. I know people who travel 60, 70 miles to go to knitting stores in other communities. That might be something that would be perfect for us, or at least kind of niche stores. And then downtown Buffalo will become an destination. People from surrounding communities will go here and buy knitting supplies if they just want to. But those are the ideas and entrepreneurialism that can occur here and help revitalize our downtown. But who wants to rent space for your downtown now? That's the problem. It looks a little run down. And here's my plan, my solution. The city can invest money in working on our sidewalks. We can rebuild our sidewalks, make it handicapped accessible, get rid of all the rugged terrain that exists. We can plant trees, we can put up white posts, we can do all those infrastructure things. But the other side of it is a community-based solution. Volunteers from the community can do that. Donate paint, donate time to paint. Volunteers can put the finishing touches on what you see on the square. And I think this is something certainly worth doing, and something that we can do. Is it easy? Oh, no. Nothing ever is. None of these projects are going to be easy, but we have the money to do it, and we've got more than that little will to do it. Those are the five projects I would present tonight. And if you want to open the floor, does anyone have an idea of other projects? If you have a microphone, if you want to, you can stay back there and yell out your name.
Oh, okay. I can yell pretty loud.
All right.
I'm a Dallas County Yarland bus driver, and we have several night trips, a lot of them involving the middle school. I would like to see streetlights put down Truman Road and along Locust there. At nighttime, when we let the kids out, that is so dangerous, and there could be anybody lurking in that area around there. And I just, I won't leave there until I know all the kids are safely in an adult companion. I think that would be a very good idea. It would light up that area, and it would also include it into our town. As it is now, it just sticks out there. It's just out there, and we're not including it into the high school split up, the grade school split up, but the middle school is not. And I think that would be a good idea.
And that's something that we can certainly approach and look at, and perhaps the school and the city could entertain into another project where Truman gets white, it gets purr and gutter, and sidewalks along Truman, and lights. And that's something that certainly is, something worth looking at. And I appreciate your input. And again, that's one of the ideas I never would have thought of, saying, you see a need and fill it. And that wasn't even I was seeing. Does anyone else have ideas? Yes, ma'am.
We had a question about, you were talking about why you made the model high school, the street, the picture of the high school there. Are you planning on that being, why not put it in a middle, like the front lane? Why does it have to be put in a middle front lane? Or there's not any common traffic and the other way to the middle front lane? Or people wouldn't have to wait?
Certainly, and that's, again, that's something I never thought of, and I would refer to the engineers on that. And I suppose perhaps a draft of study would be necessary, and a good problem, yes, you're right, that doesn't draft matters, that show a need for such a firm issue. And again, that's something for the engineers. I don't want to second guess professionals every time I graduate, but I would get the draft. Thank you. Does anyone else have ideas? Yes, sir.
I was supposed to down to New Taral. People driving up and down, not only at the wall by, but driving around the new park. And if that could be blacktop sometime, people really like the new park. Anything you can do in that area right there could be nice. Maybe put a pipe, keep people from driving around the circle. And possibly even cross the creek for burn, I don't know if they can get on that or not. Anything to do there. That's corner 50 and the other place with the impound shed and that, something nice there with the shooter.
Yeah, and there are, I'm sorry to interrupt. There are parks, and the county's going to move their road shed, and there's talks in the city taking the existing county road shed, using that apart for our walkways. And that would give us, that Green Space Trail would give us an opportunity to enhance a lot of things through there. It would link essentially the new park, perhaps by the on, to the school's new property, all the way down close to the oven. So there would be a nice walkway if you could walk, you wouldn't have to worry about cars and traffic. You could listen to your music and get a good day of exercise without worrying about getting hit by a car.
Behind the old car department, I noticed a big block. Also, something I've wondered about for a long time is the old woods building across the city hall. It's a real shame you don't have two hundred visits. If you miss, you have the Buffalo, you're probably going to have to help them out with the kids.
Well, it, yeah, and that goes, and people will tell me all the time, Mayor, you need to offer concessions to these businesses that want to come here. And I can tell you, yes. I mean, that kind of goes without saying. Any town nowadays is going to offer concessions to any business that wants to expand. So that's not a matter of yes or no. It might have been a matter of yes or no years ago, but nowadays, it's not. And I'm firmly committed in helping businesses grow here, and I believe our board of aldermen are as well. Does anyone else have ideas? Yes, ma'am.
In fact, only an idea is something that changed, that helped the city get closer and better. When I'm a kid going out, I come out and call out, and my mother pays three hundred for the law. The property owners pay half the bill, and the other half is the same pay. Probably only these pay the responsibility for their half of the mortgage debt instead of renting houses and getting away from them and not keeping them set. But I think you set the rest of the whole city together.
Well, I agree. I agree with that notion, that property owners have a contribution to paying property taxes for years and years and years, and...
If there were one town like that, you'd have heard true.
And I believe we are. We did approve the sales tax increase. The voters came out and said, yeah, I'm willing to pay a miniscule amount more to do these nice things. And the great thing about it is the folks in this room aren't going to be the only ones paying the tax. It's the people who live in Baltimore who work eleven and stop here for breakfast. It's a lot of people from outside of the city, the counties, a lot of people from other counties that come in here. That's good money. And I know people do come from other counties, that's good money here. But a lot of our money up here gets to go to other counties as well. And that's why I believe it's important, I love it. Yes, ma'am?
Is there anything taken twice in that old wood store building? Is what's in there?
And I don't know anything about it. As my understanding, the wood stand knows it, and it could be very well off on the wood stand. And it's my understanding they're using it for storage. And I've got an idea for it, and I'm a little off track here. My idea is to take everyone in the town of Courthouse and move them over there on a temporary basis. And then we demolish our old courthouse and build a nice grant like they have in part of the square. Then we might get a five million dollar pool if that happens.
I've been back for twenty years and I've never seen anything come through about that building. And I'm also wondering why, why it was, you know, we just support wood market stuff, why they could not contribute.
Oh, and certainly that, and that's an asset to our city. Our empty buildings on the square are an asset to our city. They look rundown right now. But like anything else, there's potential there. It's up to us to realize that potential. We can sit here and think about how horrible it looks and how awful it is.
Couldn't they do a tax ride off or something?
I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure they, there's something that would benefit them. And there are lots of uses, you know, the city hall can go over there.
Well, seniors center could move there and have a nice party, maybe the main event.
There's a million different ways of utilizing.
There's no problem, you know, with seniors center. If you watch and follow some of those seniors, crippled, trying to get to the seniors center, it's almost impossible.
No, I understand that.
And if they had partying, that would not be a problem.
And I imagine very low market is also a problem. Another idea that goes with this notion of downtown revitalization of the two cities, it goes beyond simply just throwing concrete out there. We would want the engineers to come in and design something nice for us. Look at people's party, look at different parking schemes, look at getting the most bang for our bucks. How can we structure this to promote economic growth? Then there's the notion, we can leave a horse quarter if we can't. We can do, build the table town. We can do everything we can in the classroom, I believe, and we can build the table. Anyone else, yes, ma'am?
I have a question. When we do get businesses on the square, why do they have to stay there? Is it because the rent is too high or there is not city participation in what they are offering?
I would, I don't know. And that's the honest answer. A lot of attorneys will tell you what they think if presented this back. I'm very quick and fully, I don't know part out of my pocket.
Or is the tax as high or?
Here's my guess. We had a coffee shop, a sandwich shop, or candlestick bar, that's right now.
Right.
On the southwest corner. And the food there was good. The coffee was good. I think there's a human sandwich or something there, I love. But if there's not a thriving business next door, and there's not a thriving business around the corner, people aren't going to be walking by there.
Well, I thought with as much as we have for court and people coming in and out of town or going to the court, that it would be a good place to be because there's no place else around to grab a cup of coffee.
Oh, I would hardly agree. But I think, I think what we would need to do is for our downtown area to be a destination, a shopping destination where someone might come from Greenwich to buy knitting supplies and then they stop and have lunch. I think if we have the square with businesses, build a coffee shop, it would massively thrive.
I don't know whether you've ever been to Hardy, Arkansas? They have a strip and they have nothing but stores down there that can treat people. And that place is packed year round. Antique stores, businesses that have crafts and everything. And that would be nice if we could bring some of that home craft things to here.
Yeah, and that's, those are the types of things that thrive in economic square. And those are the kind of businesses we deserve more. But it takes entrepreneurs, it takes people that
I was just wondering if the rent was too high is why we don't have?
Not that I'm aware of. No, I know a building that was offered more or less free for a charitable reason. And so I think, I know that there are property owners that would just love to have someone in there to keep the building alive. Because when a building is not occupied, it's deteriorating. You mentioned the old wood store, I can only imagine the condition it's in. I would hope it's in better condition, and I told you, you would be about to ask that. But they were offered that for sale. I would question the director of the integrity house group on it, hasn't been making for fifteen years. And this is the kind of problems you get into downtown.
I was just curious.
Yes, ma'am? Sorry, ma'am, you have?
Well, you covered it, I was going to say that it's not just the condition of sidewalks and that, but it is also the condition of the buildings themselves. It takes a lot of money to start a business. And when you're trying to put, you know, especially a small business like that, you're trying to throw your capital into starting a business, it's hard. You have to put even more money into just getting that building up to a scamper that you can have customers come into.
Right, right.
So the condition of the building itself is definitely a problem.
Certainly, and I think we've got an expert here that would testify to that. Mr. Boggs, he's very smart.
I'm going to give a little call.
He could certainly testify as to that. But there are needs. The Justin Peterson Foundation has built the Buffalo. And they're itching to come here and loan money for startup businesses that are looking towards that. And it comes hand in hand. Tenants got to invest money in someone else's building? Or should the owners invest in their building to draw tenants? And right now, it's hand about his hands. And I would suspect that if you want to put a little bit of money in someone's building for your business, they'll probably catch you a deal on it, I'm guessing. And the old saying, where is the will, is your will? Yes, ma'am?
Do we know anything about a vocational school in Buffalo, the sheriff or the state?
Unfortunately, I don't know anything. I know OTC is looking to expand here. There's rumors that they're going to take over, abandon bank and move in there. That's certainly going to add young people to our downtown. Maybe enough young people to support a coffee shop. I know the kids here are always happy to pay eight dollars for a cup of coffee. Yes, sir, the back?
In order to maintain the business downtown, we need some signings back out on the highway at thirty-two hundred and sixty-five that says Buffalo Square this way, like there used to be for the old runway seventy-three. People don't mind downtown Buffalo, so they can afford it.
No, in fact, and that goes hand in hand with the phenomenon of businesses, the box stores moving highways. But if the downtown area becomes a destination where people are seeking out these niche stores, then they're going to come here for a purpose, as opposed to someone for nothing. But I do agree, signage is very important, and that's something that perhaps the city can promote. I know there are obstacles when they go to want to put a sign on Highway sixty-five and then be involved, state government, and whenever you involve state or government, everything becomes just a potential for improvement. Certainly, very.
The size of square we're able to is, the only side's got parallel parking. And I'm assuming from parallel parking on that side of probably seventy-three was there, and all the traffic they took their yellow park and gave more room. Since seventy-three is huge, what would be the possibility of making that size of square head in parking then? And maybe open seniors out of that way?
And that's something that we look into, and I'm proud to say that the city of Buffalo finally accepted the deed. It took, moved out quite a bit of time to get the deed so the city can at least save a now own street. So we can kind of go in and do whatever we're pleased with now. North of there, between Bill Bryant's business to make the street grow, we did have some engineering done that addressed that. And we came up with maybe one or two extra parking spaces. And we had all kinds of different schemes to be able to put in parking. But the problem that knows in parking is because the highway's been built up so much for adding a layer of asphalt, over layer of asphalt, over layer of asphalt, you're parked at a downhill incline. And if you're in the driver's side, you've got to have the strength in ten minutes to push your door open. And if you're on the passenger side, your door's going to fly open and bash the car next door. So perhaps a downtown plan would involve milling these streets down, refinishing them, making it pretty, adding sidewalks and all the things that go with it, and then addressing parking. How do we get the most bang out of our local parking? How do we create the most and the best and the safest parking places? Yes, sir?
Sounds like a fellow about that point.
I've thought about a lot of things. There's a lot up here, I'm just not a fancy man. There's more to it than my mind. That was supposed to be funny.
Remember?
Yes, sir?
We've got a young lady over here.
Yes, ma'am?
Is Buffalo going to be a new website?
Yes, yes, I'm very pleased to announce we are. It will be, it won't have Mayor Hardest's picture on there anymore, it should have mine. But there will be a lot of resources there. We have a lot of data from our economic development committee. And if you're in Wisconsin and you have a small manufacturing business and your feasibility, people will say, hey, look at Southwest Missouri, look at these five cities. They'll be able to go to our website and see what resources we have. They'll be able to see what's there. Does anyone, yes, ma'am?
Do you have businesses that have expressed interest in coming to the square? Or are you wanting to do the improvements to draw the interest?
Well, I haven't had anyone expressly knock on our door and say, hey, what does this square have? Off of me. We've had a lot of people looking at empty buildings and saying, what have? And who owns that building? And what's their, can you provide their contact information? And I want to look into it. But I haven't heard any of this at all. I'm a firm believer in build it and they will come. If we build it, they don't come, at least it doesn't look like a rundown square. At least it looks like something worth doing. And if anything, we'll have safe sidewalks, we'll have pretty streetlights. And when the relay people come down, they'll have something nice to look at. Yes, sir?
I don't know if we still have it off. A few years ago, I had a builder, it was house builders, when the builder had to put down a hundred percent of all of the ground, several thousand dollars. The pushing was way bad. We got basic code, we didn't stick the kind of, come out front and get the circuit up. And way, those students kind of get some builders to come out in the building. That's probably
I don't think we have any restrictions on anything that does an obstacle to building. I think what's kept homes from being built here is partly our economy. We've got overabundance of capital, we have a lot of I'm proud to say that we've sold some of our new building permits in the last couple of weeks. As my understanding, the first permits and the first new builds in the last couple of years. So there are new, I'm very excited about that. But no, there aren't any, there aren't any obstacles or insurmountable obstacles to building new properties. Yes, ma'am?
Do you think we still have a lot of codes? That there was a lot of city codes like that or the houses like that? Could be code and stuff like that?
Yeah, yeah, we do have builder codes. I've got you builders, they're not monitors. They're nothing difficult to get around. If you got you a builder who builds an honest home, he'll tell you the climate of codes piece of cake, it becomes natural. I, right now, I'm serving as the vice president for Habitat Humanity. We do a lot of bills, while I say a lot, people build a new home about every two years. And we haven't had any problems with a lot of codes. It just comes natural, it does. Have that bill to qualify house. Yes, ma'am?
I was wondering earlier, you said something about new stuff about new liquid, like some nice, some of your staff that can't sign these, maybe considering things, like facility in close to the greater Buffalo area because of the movement and how many gets free in our school community. Haven't heard anything about that? And was something like that, or is it something that you heard?
I haven't, I haven't heard anything of that nature. But it would certainly at least create a handful of jobs. And maybe some residents, they might have hypothetically an office in Springfield. They might send someone up, if I relocate here, run that office and then hire someone in our community as an assistant. But yeah, it's certainly something that would create jobs and something that would be a benefit to our city. And it really is very active here. I'm very proud of what they do and amazed by what they do. I wish I had time to take part in the system, but I'm amazed at the number of people who walk to our square for this thing. And we're doing more things on our square. We've got an art block that we're, the downtown association's going to make an annual event. There's all kinds of things that are happening in Buffalo. We have some new residents that tell me there are tons of things to do here in town. I hear all the time that there's nothing to do here, nothing to do here. Boy, we've got, if you look at our community guide, the calendar's packed with things like the Celtic festival. The art block, relay, I mean, there's tons of things to do here. Get out and do it. Yes, sir?
What happened to the hospital deal? Now have the gas company in Buffalo?
I, you know, honestly, I've heard, I would say about a year ago, I know a little bit more about that now, honestly. I, the thing, the thing with our old
They're bankrupt.
They've all bankrupted, so no gas for us, I guess. That settles out. That doesn't mean the economy will pick up and that potential will come back soon. Yes, sir?
Just was wondering, what is the town building as far as, maybe with students? And, you know, when they graduate from high school, what does the academy do that for something else?
I can tell you the honest answer is absolutely nothing for it.
Well, I mean, there's the, there's the happening with students who graduate and they generate money back into the community, isn't that part of the purpose of that? The education in Buffalo?
Right, and we love that. We would love, and I can tell you there are a lot of people who have children that move somewhere else to reach out about it. They move away for jobs, and it would be nice that families able to grow their generation after generation.
So is it because the city is not offering people anything? Is that the reason why they're moving?
I think it's jobs. There's a lot of number of people who can use Springfield for jobs. When you get beyond those opportunities, then it comes time to pick up your household. And I wish it wasn't like that. I wish we had economic growth here. And I think we're certainly headed in the right direction to foster economic growth.
So where did, where did this all come from? How does Buffalo is what it is? Can't be just because I moved and lost two hundred people in town. So it hasn't been the last couple of years. So what, what have we done wrong? Must have been something wrong.
I don't, I would guess.
I don't think we want to say that Patageen left Buffalo when that was a decision that I'm When that was a decision that I know the mayor and council worked very, very hard to get them to change their mind, and so did the management, but there were a lot of jobs that left Buffalo. And anytime you lose something like that, you don't recover right away. And I don't think Buffalo's totally recovered from those jobs that we lost. Those were blue collar jobs, but they did bring in new people. Now, I'm a lifelong resident of the county, and I never thought about looking in Buffalo for work at that time. Everyone went to Springfield, there were lots of, at that time, there was Xena. I'd worked at one company, and so did a lot of other people. But that was like a bedroom community that, I didn't intend to stay there, but that's where I saw employment, that's where colleges were. Buffalo, I love Dallas County, and I love Buffalo, we're business owners here. But we are a bedroom community of Springfield, which makes it very easy to now drive. It's a thirty, what, thirty-five minute drive? So I anticipate people, we can make our town attractive, and our schools attractive, because that's what families look at, is how your city looks and how your school is. I hate to say they don't have the support, but we encounter a lot of people from out of town, and one of the things they'll say is, what is wrong with Dallas County? Why don't you pass school bonds? Why don't you support the school system? Tell me, I've lived here all my life. But those are the things new people look at. That is why, you know, that's what makes their choices of moving their family here, is how does your city look? How does your school look to me? And right now, those things we're working on. I see, you know, I see that improving, and we are now such a close drive to Springfield. I can see people buying property again, and they're relocating and dropping into their jobs. I drove for twenty-five years into Springfield, and that was on a lot worse highway than we have now. So I see good, positive changes for our community. And along the way, I just think as a community, we just have to support our city government, support our local businesses, and do what we can as citizens to make improvements for our own backyard.
We do, we have to start investing in ourselves and doing for ourselves. I've long said that the community has a sense of mental health. Our chicken policy is, how do we feel about ourselves and our economy? It breaks us down. We're no longer interested in doing our own stuff. The old car we've been intending to fix up for twenty years ain't gonna get done. We lose our will, we lose our will to make this a nice community, to take care of what we have beyond our own power. But I think attitudes are changing, and I think we're turning things around, and we're gonna get there. I mean, we were able to pass the sales tax in the previous year, and that wasn't an easy obstacle. But we're going to add revenues, and we're going to invest those revenues in us. And again, we need to take pride in what we've done, and we'll get there. Yes, ma'am.
I know, we need to beautify our community and everything, and we need to get families in here. When we get families in here, what do we have to offer the children? There's no entertainment in this town. There's no movie show, there's no skating rink, there's nothing but bowling. Now, we have the Y that will occupy after school, but that's not an evening thing for a family to go out. We have nothing in Buffalo to offer children, or young adults to do with here. They have nothing. And when families come to look at our town, they look at this. What is your kids going to do? Can they go out for an evening somewhere with a bunch of other kids? Okay, there's Pizza Hut, there's the bowling alley, but they have leagues all the time, and they only have two days of open bowling. So what is your kids going to do that you don't have to go to Baller, or you have to go to Springfield, or you have to go to Leonard? If we want to keep the revenue in this town, we're gonna have to provide for our young people also to stay in this town.
You're actually right. And kids nowadays are more difficult to entertain than they used to be. There's a comedian named Ron White, some of us know who Ron White is. He used to, when I was a kid, we had a game called Go Outside and Play With Stick. You would describe sitting there, and maybe you'd go, and when you got bored with that, you'd find another stick. You'd dig another hole. We do have assets here, we have two parks, and that's a wonderful thing. But what do we do? How long can a kid entertain himself for two acres? When I was a kid, probably quite a while. But nowadays, everything is interactive. If they're not in the park engaged in something, they can be at home on the computer, being interactive. So we need things. A great space trail would be a wonderful thing for mobility. If the kids go back and forth, ride their bikes, skateboard, a skate park. I've had a lot of people approach me about a skate park. We have ordinances, and I don't believe that they're stringently enforced, but we have ordinances against skateboarding in town. Let's provide kids a place to go and hang out and speak for it. If we have a piece of land, what do we have on it? And that is certainly a very important concern. And with economic growth comes the minute. If we have a population that's willing to go out and spend the night, then perhaps a movie theater will want to grow here. I think a drive-in theater would be a wonderful thing. Matter of fact, I've got this vision in my head where we have a huge snack bar with a long movie theater, and then they have a nice piece of delivery place that runs out of that. Next to it's a public amphitheater, we can have music and also.
We used to have a drive-in theater, and it was full all the time. They would have one night, they would have, what is it, six dollars for a carload?
But we need entrepreneurs to start that up again. And like I mentioned before, if anyone wants information on the Dusty Pierce Foundation lucky numbers, if you have an idea, if you just don't have the money around it, and pitch your test with the people who can give loans, they give loans, they're higher interest, but you don't have to have any semblance of a credit score at all. Yes, sir.
That movie theater was free if you rode in the truck.
Or snuck through the woods.
You know, one of the things we're suffering from in Buffalo, we have a finite amount of money. It's as simple as that. We have employees that owe ninety-nine dollars an hour. You can't bill. You tell them you've got so much money, and you're doing it at the best you can. And I don't mean to sound negative, but we're trying to be judicious, receptive for that money and spending it. That's why this meeting is good, to get your ideas. You talk about the street lights, I don't turn it. It costs us ninety-five dollars a month to put one of those in. So you balance what you need, and you know, back in the old days, I'm old enough to remember when federal government doled out a lot of money to the cities and to the states. They don't do that now, they send it to each of you.
Brought money to my calls.
We can't, we can't transfer them there like the federal government does. So what we're trying to do is bring that in. I think the prices are going up so much in Ozark and Nixville that if we provide a clean, beautiful town, some of those people are going to love what it costs to be trucking taxes there, and what it costs to buy, and they're gonna say, you know, Buffalo looks pretty good, and we're gonna get some people in here. But the lot of things that we're suggesting are private interests, and those folks don't have any money either. So it's a question of money. You ever think of kind of sending money? And we're gonna do the very best we can with what we have in this pen, which you just can't do everything. And, you know, I don't want you all to understand that, because everything is a good idea. But, you know, on my building down there, I spent a lot of time, but not every merchant's, you know, all merchants are not able to do that, or don't want to do that, or whatever. So it's not just, we say, you know, it's the schools, and they've got their budgetary problems, and the state, and everybody else. But I know it sounds negative, but I want you to understand that, you know, we can't go out like the chapter furniture and buy more sold it, and say, you know, buy this, and we'll have more money to deal with, because it's, it's not gonna get any better until, of course, we get more stuff in the middle. It's a problem for everyone, problem for the federal government, the state, and probably more so than the others. The city, you know, the city's the problem, and bankruptcy, because they can't pay this and do that. And we've all got goals to do absolutely everything we possibly can. The ideas that you're putting forth are great, but some of them, you know, we don't have them. Perhaps wait on, because the money's not there. We've got employees, ninety dollars an hour. You know, they've got to feed their families. So it's, it's a heck of a mess, you know, all over the country, including right here.
Wayne, I would like to say that I think we have some wonderful volunteers in this county that have put in countless hours at soccer games, kids' basketball games, and baseball games. There are a lot of communities that don't even have those things available because they do not have volunteers to run them. We need to really, everyone needs to look at their time and evaluate where you want to spend it, and volunteer some hours in your community. That's what makes a difference, whether you volunteer to come back here and paint the walls, scrub the floors, volunteer to paint a building uptown. Just look at your time. Do I want to go help a soccer league and referee or coach a team? But you can make a difference in the lives of families and children and this community for the future. But each one of us has to do our part. Like I said, we each have to clean up our own backyard and reach out to the community and make a difference.
I think we're clearly heading in the right direction.
I do too.
But it's not gonna happen today after tomorrow. It's gonna take some time to get all this done. You know, I would just say, please, be patient, because we're doing the best we can.
But the important thing is, we start moving in that direction. You know, I learned a long time ago that you accomplish in proportion to what you attempt. If you sit on the couch and try nothing, you're guaranteed to accomplish nothing. But if you go out and you try thirty things, and you're met with failure twenty-five times, you will have accomplished five things. Is that right? I don't know, do you have a map? Yes, ma'am.
This were, this lady crew working with the newer students. Now, are they going to help with some ideas in the financial area of what their, what helps the community get an idea what we could accomplish?
I don't know exactly. I think they're gonna come up with, here's their problems, here's where we want to go, here are solutions, and grants will help you. I think what they put together can be helpful in visiting, it may be helpful in giving grants. There are things that we can do to enhance our abilities to get grants, to not simply getting started. It's something that's helpful, giving grants. If we hadn't done anything with sidewalks on Main Street or Main Street, and simply applying for grants, we may not be wholeheartedly considered. But if we were to apply for sidewalk grants, and say, look what we've done, and this is what we wanted to do, we've got a succinct plan, and this is our path, then the state's gonna say, wow, these people are serious about this, they're gonna make the most out of it, and I think that enhances our ability to get grants. I think I'm a very good politician because I spoke for quite a bit of time, and I don't think I answered a question.
No, you totally do.
Yeah, I will. I'll work in a question, of course. Anyone else have any? I have a lady back here. Yes, ma'am, sure.
Do you think, I said, can the mayor ask?
Well, there's not quite a word discretionary. The mayor has spending ability under four thousand dollars without the board.
That's what I'm talking about.
Your, ma'am, your maximum limit to paying for those renderings.
Right. Richard, if you don't, do you expect to take the lack of rent to look like this?
Well, part of my plan.
I don't know, more than that.
Well, actually, my plan calls for nine. The city would do things that are infrastructure related. Streets, sidewalks, lampposts, those decorative things that make the community attractive. The private sector would be responsible for paying the buildings. People will be more than happy to donate paint. There will be people more than happy to donate labor. There are things we can do outside of the government as a community. And right now, I'm stepping out of the mayor's body and talking to you as a citizen of Buffalo. We can organize people to buy paint buildings. It's happened before, it's happened in this very room. We should make a difference as a community, to make our square look better.
I realize that. Some of these buildings would look good to be put back as a building. Some of these buildings never looked like that. And I really think that's wrong. Now, that's my preference.
What about now?
Yeah, now, what they need is a lot of sand waste and touch points, steel.
But you can't expect them to take out dollars to face up a single building when that might cost them ten thousand and two hundred, the downtown. I'm not talking about the rest of this.
It depends on your opinion, if that's.
Are you willing to invest a hundred thousand dollars in a building if you don't want it?
I'm not willing for any building to have pictures of that, to make the building that would look good.
Just to interrupt you here, that's the goal of this.
Now, these, this is the, that's how you look, pretty much, if you want.
Some of us might appreciate this look here. This building here refurbished could look like the old Iron Front buildings in the early nineteen hundreds. That's one vision, and I think that's probably the consensus of what we think is best. But we've got another vision, another idea, the old western one. This art here, your renderings are to get us thinking. What do we want our downtown to look like? We don't want it to look like what it looks like now, do we?
How much is it gonna cost us to make this look like, and to have somebody put up their idea of art?
You know, the answer is, I don't know.
You know, that's, you know, look good. I can imagine coming into a small town, and I got a lot of, and looking at the buildings, and thinking, oh my God, what are they thinking? They burned their building, and the architecture, like, all building.
And I agree with you. And these are ideas, and that's what's important about having democracy, having ideas, talking about ideas, debate in nineteen hundreds. There's a ton of potential there. I wish you were able to do what you want to go. Now, early on, eight months ago, six months ago, when the first began to talk about what do we want to do with our downtown, I had the worst idea I've ever had in my entire life.
I agree.
How many people are St. Louis Cardinals fans? St. Louis opened the baseball season in Miami. The Miami Marlins had their brand new stadium, and it was opening day of baseball, and St. Louis Cardinals beat the Miami Marlins. And they had this wonderful new stadium, except for the back fence was Mark Necco's. It was painted in Asian turquoise and this and that. I thought, hey, we can do that to our square. And then I realized that is a horrible idea, but it's an idea. What about the Western? What about the original Iron Front one? Yes, ma'am.
The fact of the matter is, those are privately owned buildings.
Yes.
So it is up to the owner what they want to do with the facade of their building.
Certainly.
So, you know, if they like the mural, then they have the right to fill those on again, as long as it's not against any city ordinances.
Certainly. And it's a matter of coming up with comprehensive plan, and that's gonna require two problems. And it's a matter of coming up with comprehensive plans, and that's going to require two problems. That's going to require the infrastructure side that perhaps the city should be responsible for. We get someone who knows more about stuff than I do, like King Coltrane. King, how do we mill our streets down? To what grain do we bring them? How do we put our sidewalks in there? How do we put our crosswalks there? Where do we put our lights? How do we deal with water? How do we do the foundation of what's there? The second side of it, we go to charitable organizations, we go to individuals, Habitat for Humanity, that's not what Habitat does for living, but they might be instrumental. We go to area churches, we go to neighborhood heroes, we go to anyone who wants to make a difference in our community. And we get donations. Downtown Association has been testing the ways that they've had for abandoned. Money's there, there are people who care. Y'all are painting, doesn't possible, why? None of it does nowadays. It used to not possible, why? Free labor, I'm happy to spend a day or two or a week out there painting buildings down there. We've already proven that. A lot of little things in this building were painted and cleaned. These two ladies right here spending quite a bit of time here working on this abandoned center. A lot of money was donated to the outside of the abandoned center. Our public cares about our communities, and we can harness that. Aside from the things that perhaps government should do, there are things we can do outside of government. So this downtown plan that I presented is too wrong. It doesn't wholly encompass what government's... The city isn't going to be buying paint to paint the people's buildings. But I think we can get together as a community, they can go to building owners, business owners and say, hey, we want to invest in your area. We want to help you with business here.
Andrew?
Yes, sir.
May I ask, how many of you have lived in Buffalo for less than two years? What brought you to Buffalo?
I liked the small-town atmosphere. We lived in Lebanon, and I liked coming here and being able to interact with my community. Whereas you couldn't do that in Lebanon because it wasn't a community like it is here. And that is one of the main things that I liked about Buffalo.
Good point. And Mr. Porter? Good job there. Anybody else? Thank you. Mayor's kicking the coors.
I'm sorry. And that's a wonderful sentiment, but we do have resources here. And I do, stuff will happen, as much as I'd like to. But those folks are our family. I mean, I just, I love them to death, and they give themselves like you have to believe. We've been setting up for a couple days now for a garage of the BFW, and that's going to kick off tomorrow morning and run through Saturday. And these folks are very unselfish. What's the word?
Selfless.
That's it. They donate so much themselves to build houses for people, to raise funds. And, boy, they do good work. I think as a community, we can do that for ourselves, aside from what government can do, give, or anything we can do for ourselves.
Mr. Stafford, have you seen the work tonight? We need to hear it.
Does anyone else have ideas? Yes, sir.
I just want to thank you, thank you for what you did for cleaning St. Louis Buffalo with your courage and your diligence. I would add that we...
We've got your garden pretty good right now.
You've helped me out and add garden.
I've always had a lot.
You've done a great job.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else have any input or, or...
One of the...
Chris is ready. Yes, yes, sir.
Homeboy, you said a total ninety-five dollars per month for three lights?
Yeah.
What's a pole light for a hundred?
Well, I can explain that. We've purchased electricity and fixed here from Empire Electric, and we pay so much for a pole per month, we don't send our city employees up the pole to fix the library. That is kind of a contract thing through Empire. Now, the ones we spoke of on Truman, Southwest Electric, I believe has the rights to those poles. Normally, we spend about ten dollars per light per month. The ones that are on that Southwest grid cost us about ninety-five to a hundred dollars a light. So it's about ten times the horsepower spent with lighting on Truman. We had a local ordinance on our last agenda, our last Board of Alderman meeting, and we did approve, I believe it was a four out of five.
Well, not too far to go.
And the one on Locust Street, about halfway up, that put four in there, it was a subdivision to the east. So we approved three out of four. The one that the board did not approve was one over by the breakfast, up there on Truman, that'd be on the west side of sixty-five. We were talking about that one there. And the board felt it was possible because it would have been ten times more expensive than the other lights left in the building.
I think we could force them to meet the competition or something, you know?
Good.
You know, it'd be nice.
You force them, our Southwest, we're all for you.
But there are, aside from the rigorous negotiation that might need to take place, there are ways of working with the school. Perhaps the school would be interested in splitting this possibility. You know, there are other schools down there. Or perhaps we just buy the bullet and pay for it.
Someone made a statement a while ago about a couple of Buffalo owners saying, what's happened to the square? What's going on up there? There's nothing there. Has anybody looked into the Alver Square lately? They are empty, the north side of the square is almost all empty.
South, south side.
The west side is partially empty, the businesses have gone out. The east side is all CMH, so there's nothing there. So Alver Square has problems, almost as bad as we think.
Certainly.
Yeah, once in a while.
But if you look at Warsaw, Warsaw's done a lot of food and they've bought it, and they've bought on their buildings, and they have nice places that are available, and there are businesses doing it. So Warsaw is a town moving in the right direction, and I think that's what we need to aspire to.
Well, they're getting the four lights fixed. But the thing is, now, if you have a business on a square, a coffee shop didn't have any great traffic, then we need the signage to break people back to the square. If the state took out, needs to replace that somehow, to get the traffic back up there. Nobody needed a lighter down, a shop or a square, they did.
Certainly. I mean, it could be any number of things that could go in where that's a drug industry. I remember as a kid, I played baseball cards, and I would have my parents constantly change the baseball card stores. Had I had my way, we would have done the round robin every other day and gone to every baseball card store round. That would be something that you'd... We've got a question back here.
Well, I was just thinking about what she was talking about, the pictures over there. I think the idea of the pictures wasn't to say, this is what we're going to do, it's to give people kind of a vision, and the same with those pictures, is to give people a vision and get people excited and get people motivated and to want to do stuff and to make the changes needed. Like you said, it's going to be, it's not going to happen overnight, but if we just sit around going, you know, the government's a mess, everything's a mess, and don't do anything, then it's going to stay looking like that.
Certainly. And it's inspiring people, it's inspiring people here tonight. It's because the synapse is inspiring and us thinking in that direction. Because when we see it every day, and we don't like the way it looks, we start to block it out, and then it doesn't exist for months. But what can we achieve? What direction can we go in?
One thing that mine and I were thinking, we did those pictures, and that was just an idea, like she said, a vision of what made it happen. The reason that we took those pictures on windows and murals, and given a lot of, thus towards, drive for it, and not just to show, you know, to see those kind of things, and that would generate a lot of business in our town. We had coffee shops and shops for them to visit, a lot of them looking at our murals which are in New York. I believe in New York, or considering people who are just seeing inside of us.
You have a beautiful one here. And I said that time and time again, in Buffalo, we need to get, we need something to get people out. Now, we have a lot of them, we have free labor sites, we have the art block, but you look at other surrounding communities, they have other daughter making days. And in Mount Vernon, they have soccer days down Nixon. It seems like each of the towns around us has their own little festival. What can we do here? What identifies us? I even thought we could have porter dates here, and everyone could take all the stuff they poured it in and bring it up. Not a bad idea.
The square is not big enough.
You tell us about all these other towns having their little ours, other base and all that. We have a county festival.
We sure do.
Support it, get it to grow. Maybe something else can come off of it. Don't say we don't have it.
Well, we don't have something that identifies us.
Yeah, we do. That identifies us.
So she hanging up?
Yeah.
Maybe, I, I never...
Do the other towns around us have? No.
No.
We have it. Make it grow. Make it more ours.
That's a good one. Yes, ma'am?
I want to know, and I'm going to change the subject. Has the Walmart Supercenter been tabled? Are we not ever going to get one here?
It's my understanding that when they approached the government, at that time, government said, ha ha, Walmart's here, we're going to hold them over the barrel, and they're going to give us billions of dollars, and we're going to build all this great stuff. And I graduated from the University of Chicago Hospital Law Fayetteville, a lot of my friends worked for Walmart up in Fayetteville, and I understand you don't negotiate with Walmart that way. We bend over backwards to give them each and everything they want. If Walmart comes to town and they say, Andrew, we need your first mail, or I'll, I'm going to start taking that, I'm going to start like James. And I go, no, we'll take this.
Well, if we can't get Walmart in here, could we get a Target? Could we get another discount store that would be comparable to Walmart? That would bring in jobs, would bring in economy?
The problem is, you look at these big box stores, and the national trend is, they're scaling back. They're finding ways to make profits that interest, so they start buying stuff from China. Walmart used to price something by American make goods.
Scared.
Not anymore.
So a lot of the big...
Maybe if we had a menorah, like they got into Third Century State Beach, if we had anything worth that, it's kind of here.
I mean, if that would be feasible, and I don't think it is feasible. You know, one of the stores I love is Stanley's Video at Springfield, at Woodstone, and Jay and I run down there, we rent movies. And I noticed something on their wall in there, they had some statistics, like they were putting so many thousands of stores and communities all over the area, and they blessed. And I said, hey, are you coming to Buffalo? And he said, well, what's your population? So we got about three thousand people, and he said, no.
I've been doing that with Caesars Pizza, too. I've been trying to get them to come to Buffalo.
I think a lot of businesses, when they do expand, like I said, is that the feasibility thing, they look at is what economy will support us and what location is, is... Yes, ma'am?
Has there ever been any studies or like maybe a survey sent out, even through the paper or something, asking people what it is that they need and that they would want, and why they're leaving Buffalo to go buy it elsewhere? Because if you found out what it was that people wanted here and would stay here to buy it, then you can kind of put that out there for entrepreneurs, you know what I'm saying? That they could say, you know, you could say, oh, people are leaving, all these things are needed in Buffalo, and people would buy them here. And then entrepreneurs can kind of say, hey, I could fill that need. And then somehow the city and the banks could kind of work together to kind of try to help that happen.
Certainly. I don't have any studies, but I think it goes along the old line of the C and E film. I know a guy who brews beer, he's local brewer, he's one of the warts at festivals in Springfield, but he drives the Oath Art to buy supplies. He entertained the end of having a beer brewing supply shop here in Buffalo, and it would no doubt draw people from Oliver, draw people from Lebanon, draw people from Gervais, and that would probably be a pretty thriving store. The problem is, he doesn't want to be heaven and that, he wants to work to live and not live to work. But those type of niche stores would certainly thrive on our square and draw in business from outside of the county. I can tell you that why people shop elsewhere, just last week, I knew two ladies who decided to carpool to the Walmart over in Vaulter. They have things at their Walmart that we don't have here at our Walmart. And I understand that. You mentioned Walmart, are they going to come here? I think Walmart's, they're kind of one of those companies that we shot them down, tried to take advantage of, and we're probably laughing for the next however long. I would guess I don't count Walmart sees this video on YouTube, please come by. We welcome, we open arms.
I don't want Walmart.
Yes, sir.
Is there a department on this tax?
Yes, our capital group of tax has a sunset of three years, so in three years...
About a dollar.
A dollar, approximately three hundred thousand dollars a year. Those tax revenue hasn't been fairly stagnant. Years ago, we were a little bit above three hundred thousand of threshold with the half of sales tax, around three and quarter. Lately, it's been just under three hundred thousand a year, so over.
These things, the posts, they're all really nice, they're all across the block. Should we be like, just pay the one, going all the way, you know, getting it done, raising it instead of paying five or six?
Well, and that's good wisdom, that's good conservative, I guess, plan. But like I said, of course, you accomplish in proportion to what you try. Now, I'm not saying we go out and dig six different holes in six different locations, but we certainly need to be mindful of what's next. And I think, I'm all in favor of, once we lay down the shovel on project number one, get some monies there, we're ready to pick up the shuttle the next day on project number two. We can't finish project one, and then go home and watch TV for a couple of years and think, hey, we've got nine hundred thousand dollars saved account, maybe we should do another project. When we get down with Locust Street project, I'm going to guess we'll have somewhere, the highest half a million dollars sitting in the transportation fund, below then three hundred fifty thousand dollars in the transportation fund. And I've said time and time again, if I'm sitting in the bar at Applebee's in Springfield, and I'm talking to a city planner from Nixon, and I lean over to him and I say, we've got half a million dollars in our transportation fund, how much is that going to impress him? Not at all. If I told him, we've got about eight, nine dollars in our transportation fund, but we've rebuilt this road, we've got a link from our high school to the new park, they're going to be impressed. Having money in the bank shouldn't impress anyone. We are not Buffalo savings alone. We're a community that needs to rebuild itself, and I believe we're moving forward. So I'm not saying we're going to do all these projects tomorrow, we're trying to guard our ideas. Where do we go next? What do we want to do? And for the board to sit down... And that's why we're here to correct that.
I think you'll find that the council is not merely progressive as a mayor. We're going to hold it back.
Unfortunately, Ted.
You guys, you're being a little bit too far on the left side of some meetings, and I think you guys all work together, get things done, you know, and yeah, sometimes you guys are going to go through some really different rules that you're navigating, but we can do it yet, but please, you guys have all worked together. We got that one building out there, because Mr. Stafford one day just said, "Hey, because you're coming up, we need us to do it now." And you guys finally all, I mean, Chris's one has brought in lots of clean bones and stuff, it really works together, and we're, you know, you guys are trying to remember to do this stuff. Yeah. I think it's helpful.
Well, we do as a whole have a progressive mindset, some more progressive than others. I'm progressive, this is a senator liberal, I don't want people to think I'm a dirty liberal, but along the same lines. I've proven that we can do things conservatively, we can do things intelligently. We don't need to hire a company from Pittsburgh, Kansas to build our roads. We can do that here. We can hire people, look, you can do that for us. We have a skilled labor force here. We're capable of doing for ourselves. Does anyone else have that? Yes, ma'am?
I don't really have a question, but I want to comment, and I think Buffalo is pretty lucky to have you, because you have that tunnel vision, and you've got all these, what else, why can't we do this? And you have visions, and you're excited about it, and that excitement settles down. And it's kind of like Wayne said, everything can't be done, but, you know, common sense tells you everything can't be done. But if you just sit back and go, "Well, we can't do this," you're not going to do anything.
I agree, and I appreciate it.
You've got these visions, you've got these expectations, and some of them might work, some might not, but if you don't have vision, you don't have anything.
I appreciate what you have.
I agree with that. I appreciate the fact that you were not born and raised here. Makes me ashamed sometimes when I see your visionary attitude, because I had you come very complacent and thought, "Um, Dallas County is just in the squares, and I just go to pot." It's not like I remember it when I was a kid, but nothing is.
New blood.
But what I see is we're forging ahead, and we're making, you know, not huge leaps, but we are making progress in this city and in this county, and I want it to be a place where my great kids can come back and visit, and someday they'll say, "You know, when I used to go to Buffalo, that was the coolest town." I want it to be like that someday, because that's how I feel about Buffalo, is like real. I love it today.
And we'll get there. And I understand how lazy he sits in. You can only beat your head against the wall for so long. My forehead is not yet fully bruised, and I'm very healthy about it. Does anyone else have any input or comments? Yes, sir?
Someone said earlier that he had ones that he used to do, and I've watched this for a lot of years, and it really helped. So I'm just going to tell you, I have actually, I have personally, and that's indoor golf games, arcades and stuff like that. Only ever done it about, like, well, with our paint.
We need to go to Regis House.
Paying the pay that you're having to pay. Wayne, you can just play.
Well, that's one, it gives that one, and that's something for private nonprofits. I mean, there's only so much business that the government can do. We can do things to promote business, create a nice environment for business to flourish.
I have every right. I just do my idea.
And I've had a lot of ideas, too. My problem is, I reach into my pocket, and, boy, I don't have the capital. But the good news is, like I said before, there's the John Dean Peterson Foundation, and they're willing to dump money in small businesses so that they can flourish. And if anyone needs information on that, certainly let me know. Anyone else? I want to thank you all very much for showing up and listening to me sometimes babble tonight. I presented five ideas on that conference ballot, and there might have been a need for ten of them. If you have an idea, something you feel strongly about, or kind of feel about, write that in there, put that before your press. There's a million directions for you to go, and this new sales tax is going to start in banks. And I've said it time and time again, I want to spike, at least six times, then women have a say. We want to keep that bank account at zero, because I want us to do things for it. Again, thank you so much for your time. Thank you.